And a moment of silence to give thanks and praise. Alrighty, are there any adopts or amendments, edits, or adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is so adopted. We'll start off with public comments today. It looks like we have one person signed up for public comments. You get three minutes. Keep it civil, direct it to the board, not an individual, and the mic is yours, Mr. Jeff Carroll.
So the whole time I've been quiet again? But anyway, I'm not here to beat nobody up, period. I just want... Everybody just slow down. This year, I watched a plant... I want to pick on this guy right here. I watched a planning board meeting last week, then all the dots in my head started connecting. I said, "Why is this town going in all these crazy directions, all this urgency to get this done so quick?" I've lived here my whole life. Mineral Springs still looks like the same place twenty years ago, still to this day. And I take a lot of pride in that, going through here. And I hate seeing this farm go down. I had this NC State and all that out there. My little boys in the car used to ride by. I said, "Roll you want us now? We got to see the cows." But they're gone now. They're fixing to be gone. But this Yarborough Farms is across from where I live at. When I saw Stone in that meeting with them, Polo Grounds is back here. Y'all said he's not here. Y'all didn't understand. This Polo Grounds meeting, three hundred and fifty people here was here for this meeting, but this town did not know anything about this meeting, so they said. That's what bothers me. It's black and white. We're playing in gray area, and I don't... I'd rather you tell me to my face and hurt me than just keep it gray and then I got to figure out little tidbits. But the Polo Grounds is still there. Frank Cowie's cutting trees down as hard as he can over there for some uncautious reason. But he starts at five in the morning, and he's still cutting right now on the Polo Grounds. So y'all, some of you are not even looking at me right now, so that's okay. But I just wish we'd just slow down. I put my farm into trust for my... I'm not here for investment. I came here for my family, to leave for my family. They can't sell it, so my grandkids got to have something down the road, and that's what I'm here for. I just wish just to slow down a little bit.
Thank you for your comments, and that concludes today's public comments. Next up will be the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda is adopted. Next up, we have some recognitions. I believe we have Mr. Jeff Wells recognizing our new fire chief.
Alright, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of quick words about Mr. Regoli, and then I'll let him talk to you for a few minutes about himself and what he's doing with Waxaw Fire Department. So I'm delighted to introduce Waxaw Volunteer Fire's new fire chief, Mr. Kevin Regoli. Kevin is a military veteran and has a long history of service in Union County, including the Mineral Springs Volunteer Fire Department, Monroe Fire Department, and Union County, where he served as fire marshal, and I believe he was appointed fire marshal back in 2015. And then I think he had probably the world's shortest retirement before he got the opportunity to serve the Waxaw Volunteer Fire Department. And so with that, I'll let Kevin tell them about, tell the board about himself. Kevin?
Dean, Mr. Mayor, Board, Mr. Manager, and Public, my name's Kevin Regoli. Hope you don't mind, I'm going to turn this way. Kevin Regoli, born and raised here in Union County, despite the last thing in and in and out. I grew up in Mineral Springs. I live one mile from where I grew up as a child. I'm a proud Parkway graduate. The only time I've ever been away from Union County is for college and the military. Growing up, I couldn't wait to get away. Once I got away, I couldn't wait to get back. Like Mr. Wells said, I retired as a Union County Fire Marshal in January, and the Board of Directors at the Fire Department in Waxaw asked me if I'd be interested in coming in and being interim chief. We just, they wanted to make a change in direction, make sure that we were doing what we needed to do, what was best for the organization, the town, and the community that we serve. So they brought me in as interim chief February first, and on July the first, they appointed me as the fire chief. I'm a part-time guy, but I can promise that I give a full-time effort, just like every other member of the Waxaw Fire Department. We are still the same Waxaw Fire Department member from years back, just in a new building, or a newer building with newer equipment. Currently, on our roster, we've got fifty-nine paid part-timers, fifteen career firefighters, meaning Waxaw is their primary bread and butter, day in and day out. And I'm also blessed to have about eighteen volunteers, and believe it or not, about eight new junior firefighters. Those are high schoolers that are interested in fire service as a career. A couple of those that started in Waxaw many years ago have worked their way from cadets, to I've got a couple of them that are on board now as full-time career firefighters. It's good to meet everybody. I'm sorry it took me so long to get to meet and introduce myself to everyone here, but as you can imagine, we're kind of busy with everything going on around us. We're actually fixing to turn dirt for a brand-new fire station on Waxaw Creek, so I'll bring our third fire station online. We're doing that to cover some of the areas that we couldn't cover successfully through our ISO evaluation. If anybody wants to talk to me about ISO, I can talk for hours. Basically, that's the state's report card for a fire department, and the better we do, the lower your home insurance premiums are for your businesses and your homes. Right now, we're class four. Out of ten, ten being the worst, one being the best, and we're hoping that our next rating, period, which is about four years from now, we can approve on. So thank you for letting me come speak to everybody tonight, say hello. And like I said, if anybody from the community's got any questions, feel free to come by, pay a visit. I'd be glad to speak with you, elected folks. If you've got any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer those now for you.
I just want to add that some of your better leaders are the leaders not necessarily looking to lead, and it seems you're a great example of that, as a couple of times that I have had the pleasure to be at the firehouse, that they seems to be a very happy, very content group of fellows there. So it's great to see.
Thank you. I never wanted to be a fire chief, but I wanted to help the community that I grew up in, so that's why I'm here.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hold your breath, hold your breath. Thank you. Alrighty, next up, we have Ms. Melissa Johnson, another recognition from Parks and Rec.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, and Public. I am proud to announce two of our newest staff members with our Parks and Rec Department, and I am Melissa Johnson, the Deputy of Recreation with Parks and Rec. So we had two vacancies in our department on the event team starting in July. We had an event manager opening, and we also had an event clerk-turned-coordinator position that was opened. So both of those positions have been filled. Hayden Jordan, behind me, joins us from Clemson University. He's a recent graduate, and we are proud to have him on our team as the event coordinator. And Amanda Howard, behind him, is our new event manager, and she was previously with the Town of Matthews, so she is one that I have worked with in the past. And both of them have hit the ground running with the event team. Special shout-out to Michael White, our other event coordinator, who's been a big help to getting the team settled. So we're proud to have them on our team with the event department, so thank you so much for allowing us to recognize them.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome. Thank you. Welcome. Alrighty, next up, we have Ms. Lisa Thompson, another recognition for Janet Pirato.
Good evening, Lisa Thompson. I'm the Planning Director for the Town of Waxaw. I'm here tonight to recognize Janet for earning her Sustainable Preservation Certificate from Cornell University. As a planner too for our town and the Historic Preservation Commission liaison, Janet has made remarkable contributions over the past few years. Thanks to her efforts, our town is now recognized as a certified local government. She has gone above and beyond bringing in experts from the State Historic Preservation Office for tax credit and brick workshops, expanding the facade grant program, and applying for grants to create more opportunities for homeowners and business owners to preserve the historic buildings in downtown Waxaw. This past spring, Janet received her certification with straight A's. This was a six course, this was six courses over three months, deepening her knowledge of historic preservation. She covered topics with signif- such as significance of preserving historic buildings, advocating for preservation during modern renovations, and developing strategies to extend the life of these structures. We all know that our historic downtown is the heart of our community, so Janet works to ensure, Janet's work ensures that it will not only be preserved, but will continue to thrive. Thank you, Janet, for your dedication and passion for preserving the town's history.
So thank you, Lisa, for those kind words. I was a little worried about what you were going to say, because when I walked into her office, she said, "Don't look at this." And thank you to Madison Blair and Lauren for all their encouragement. I am so happy to be a part of a group that really supports each other. And as much as I would love for this to be all about me, I would really like to take a moment to recognize the Historic Preservation Commission. They are a great group of folks to work with. They are dedicated to preserving the history of Waxaw. They work well together as a team. Their work plan was a collaborative effort that everybody had input on. Each individual has taken ownership and contributes to meeting those goals, and that requires a time commitment, much more than just attending one meeting for an hour a month. These folks really put in time, their own time, to meet our goals. So I want to say thank you to Terry Settle, Kelly Hickey, Paul Fitzgerald, Dennis Shepherd. A special thanks to Brendan Toms, who is also on the OAB Review Committee and has been spending time reviewing and interviewing applicants. A special thank you to Kirsten Messenger for taking on the Oral History Project. That is a time-consuming project, tracking down people to talk to, arranging, scheduling, recording the interviews, doing the transcriptions, working with the state archives. So I can't say enough about the good work that Kirsten does. And another special thank you to Chris Moorefield, who is working on a special history project for the new town hall building, which you'll all get to see in a few weeks. She is creative and dedicated to the town, and I can't wait for you all to see what she came up with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations and thank you, Janet. It's never easy to go to school or holding down a job. Alrighty, next up, we have Chief Dex Wilson with a five-year service of work.
Good evening. So we're here tonight to recognize Sergeant George Wally for five years of service to the citizens of Waxaw. As you could tell, he's also not only a great sergeant with the Police Department, but a great grandfather as well. So George came to us from NYPD. He retired from there as a detective. He left there, went to Matthews, did a one-and-a-half-year stint before he found his family here in Waxaw. So he's been here for five years so far, and I think he's probably going to be here for a lot longer. Yeah, I don't think we can run him off, so I think it's safe to say that George is having a great time here in Waxaw.
I just want to thank the town. It's actually nice to work in the place that I live. Didn't get that in New York City because of the size of the city, and you kind of just get lost in the shuffle, so it's nice to be working in my own community and just hope to be here for a lot longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations and thank you. Alrighty, next up, presentations, we have none, and there are no public hearings tonight. So it's off to old business, old business. Madison Miller, you have a presentation regarding an ordinance on commercial vehicles. Madison?
Thank you and good evening, everyone.
Give everyone a second and wait for the presentation to pull up.
Maybe just one more moment. I mean, I could just do it off the fly. I got to print it off, and we can go full steam ahead.
Want to jump to item two while we dig that up?
That's fine with me.
Can you present from there?
I can. I'm also, if Matt is guiding it, you need to go to the Planning Folder, the L drive, and then go to Code Enforcement, then go to Code of Ordinances Updates, and then go to Commercial Vehicles, go to 827 2024, and then it should be that PowerPoint presentation there that you have selected. And just like that. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Wherever you are.
So I am before you tonight as the Code Enforcement Department to amend Section 66-21 of our Code of Ordinances. This amendment would update our commercial vehicle exceptions and definitions. And so since it's been about a month since you first saw this, I'll go over it in full detail. So what is added in green is in addition to the exception. So this would be a commercial vehicle that would be allowed. So if the commercial vehicle is light or medium, weighing less than fourteen thousand pounds, primarily used to operate a power attachment, it would be allowed to be parked where the owner resides. However, it would not be allowed to be parked overnight on public streets. And so this is a change to the definition. What is in red and highlighted is being removed, and again, what's in green is being added. So we are defining a commercial vehicle as a vehicle with more than two axles or a gross weight of fourteen thousand pounds or more. And the part that's marked out, any advertising or business designation on a vehicle, made it a commercial vehicle by our standards, so we are removing that from our ordinance. So Code Enforcement Staff recommends approval of this proposed change as it would allow residents greater flexibility when residing inside town limits. And so your requested action tonight would be for a motion to approve those proposed changes with this motion right here. And if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Questions from the board?
Alrighty, and if not, I will slide back to this.
Can I get a motion to approve the proposed changes to the town's Code of Ordinances for commercial vehicle updates?
Motion to approve ordinance 2024-020, Section 66-21, amend in commercial vehicle exceptions and definitions related to trucks, tractors, trailers, motor coaches, and the like.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. And the ayes have it, this motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Madison. Next up, Ms. Lisa Thompson again. We have a decision to be made on the R2 and the Conservation Subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. We are really excited tonight about this decision. This is the first big step in the implementation of the Waxaw 2040 Plan. We talked about this last time during the public involvement meetings. We heard concerns over density, open space, tree safety. We believe this text helps with those concerns. I'm going to go rather quickly. We went through this in detail at the public hearing, so if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. But a conservation subdivision, it's a subdivision that devotes at least half of its potentially buildable land area as undivided protected open space. We went through the benefits of these types of subdivisions. We talked about the applicability, the procedures, all the requirements. We're basically eliminating the cluster requirements and replacing it with this conservation design. So you can have an R1, an R1 conservation, R3, R3 conservation. Blair was up here. He went into detail on how these plans are formulated. We start with a yield plan. This is density neutral, so you take that same number of lots. You change the dimensional, reduce the dimensional requirements, and then design around the open space, so it's fifty percent open space. We talked about the types of open space. You have your primary and secondary. We also talked about adding that R2. This bridges the gap between R1 and R3. It's very similar to Union County's R20, the twenty thousand square foot lot that's adjacent. It's very similar to Union County's R20, the 20,000 square foot lot that's adjacent to our jurisdiction. The Planning Board heard the text amendment on July 16th. We talked about their concerns to make sure the land is kept in conservation in perpetuity. What happens if an HOA becomes defunct? The maintenance policy and maintenance plan covers all of that. And I'm talking with our attorney. She's had several of these kind of subdivisions through her past experience in Davidson. We can have a template provided to us that all the applicants sign. And I guess we're deed restricted through that template. We held a public hearing at the last meeting. It was August 13th. We had one person speak in favor of that text amendment. So tonight, we're looking for a motion for approval in that Land Use Plan Consistency Statement. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Also, again, wanted to thank the planning staff. Most of them are here tonight. This is six months in the works, so we are happy to get to the finish line.
Any questions from the board? A question that I had received earlier was, at what point in a, for projects that are already in the queue, for instance, could this be applied to those? And is this in any way a compulsory type of thing?
No, if they're in the queue, they can stick to the old ordinances. Anything, any application we get from tonight forward has the ability to use the design, conservation design.
So for instance, we just had a public meeting on the Olivia, an information session for that, and that's something that they would then have to voluntarily choose to do something like this?
They would.
That they cannot be forced to do it at this point?
Yep, it is conditional, so that's something we can look at while we're reviewing the plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? None? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve text amendment TA 016 2024? And the reasonableness and consistency statement is followed.
Motion to approve text amendment TA 016 2024, and the reasonable, do I have to do two separate motions or just one?
Just one.
Just. Okay, okay. The text amendment is consistent with the Waxahau 2040 Comprehensive Plan and reasonable, and in the public interest in that it preserves and establishes continuous open space corridors and improves site development design to maximize environmental values.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Lisa. Thank you very much, planning team. Alrighty, next up, we will jump to new business. Where'd Lisa go? Oh, she's sat down already. It's unfortunate. I would invite Ms. Lisa Thompson. The party starts after the meeting. Looks like we have an annexation petition. Exactly. She had a party with Parks and Rec, what the hey?
They get all the applause, so it's good to get some applause. Annexation petition, this is for a request by property owner George Hatzenikitas for annexation of approximately 7.36 acres. It's located at 9931 Waxahau Highway. To orient you to the site, the project is highlighted in red. You have the new Rome Creek subdivision within Union County to the east, and to the west is the Heathwood subdivision. And you have Highway 75, and then Helms Road, the new, sorry, my hand's not steady, the new J-hook. That's the DOT Railway Connection is right next door to this, adjacent to this property. State Statute 160A-31 is the annexation process. Tonight, we're doing steps one through three. We're certifying that the petition is accurate, and we're going to go ahead and call for that public hearing that moves forward. We're looking at a September 10th public hearing. We'll get those notices out as required by state statute, and then the decision would be September 24th. So we're looking for two motions this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2024-019, directing the town clerk to investigate the annexation petition?
Motion to approve Resolution RES 2024-019, directing the town clerk to investigate annexation petition 18-235.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Has the town clerk verified this petition?
Yes, I've verified the petition and found that it was sufficient.
In that case, I'd like to get a motion to approve Resolution 2024-020, scheduling a public hearing.
Motion to approve Resolution RES 2024-020, scheduling the public hearing for September 10th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the Police Department Community Room.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much. Have fun with Parks and Rec. Alrighty, next up, we have the Authorization and Execution of the Memorandum of Understanding for the Charlotte Regional Transportation and Planning Organization.
Well, good evening. This is a update from the CRTPO Board. In essence, to provide some background and context on this item, the CRTPO Board endorsed an update to its Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, and authorized CRTPO staff to circulate the updated documents for signatures during a CRTPO July 17th Board Meeting. In order for CRTPO's updated MOU to be considered, the current documents, signatures must be received from the chief elected official and clerk, the mayor and Barbie in this case, for each of the CRTPO's voting jurisdictions. So the CRTPO has retained an attorney, Mujeeb Shah Khan, to assist with the MOU update process, and Mr. Shah Khan has recommended that each jurisdiction, including Waxahau, listed in the MOU, place the CRTPO's MOU on an agenda and take formal action to authorize the signature by the chief elected official. And then the CRTPO Board leadership has requested that all jurisdictions sign and return the executed documents by September 13th. So as far as going over brief technical revisions to the MOU, there were some technical revisions to the preamble, which basically just updated this to the current versions of federal and state law. Section 1 changes, modified a few terms, including Charlotte urban area in accordance with current practice, changed CRTPO to Policy Board in multiple instances, spells out the responsibility of CRTPO to align of current practice, and there was some discussion on how CRTPO will work in cooperation with the Metropolitan Transit Commission, or MTC, and the Charlotte Area Transportation System, CATS, when mass transit projects are involved. Additionally, there was clarification on the role of municipalities when projects are going through their municipality and what role that municipality plays in alignment decisions. Furthermore, clarification was provided to the Technical Coordinating Committee's roles to reflect current practice, and clarification to administrative coordination provided by the Charlotte Planning, Design, and Development Department to reflect current practice. Some Section 2 changes involved or concerned with modifications related to the termination of the MOU and addressed expansion of planning area caused by annexations. So one of the key updates in the MOU is the annual cost share methodology. So this is currently the 2013 Memorandum of Understanding methodology, and there were some challenges with that methodology, those being that it's a complicated calculation, and there's a unique methodology for each county, Iredell, Mecklenburg, and Union County. So to help update this, the proposed new annual cost share methodology uses the decennial census figures for counties and jurisdictions with a pro-rata share for each jurisdiction relative to planning area and population. With this effort, it provides more of a transparent and uniform methodology across all the counties in this particular region, and uses accepted population totals and avoids estimation of population figures. So this will go into effect, once the final, once it's finalized and processed, will go into effect fiscal year 2026. And the difference in the cost share for Waxahau's portion since our 2010 census was about 9,859 people, and our 2020 census is 20,534. The cost share increases from 5,400 to 91, or about 9,200 annually. In exchange for this cost share, there's the full cost share breakdown for all the municipalities and jurisdictions within this particular region. In exchange for this, and Waxahau meeting the minimum 20,000 threshold in accordance with the 2020 census, Waxahau's votes increases from one vote to two votes on the, on the board. In addition, Huntersville, Mooresville, and three counties, Iredell, Mecklenburg, and Union County, increased from two to three votes because their populations were in excess of 50,000. So that's really the key threshold. If you're under, if you're under 20,000, you're one vote. If you're over 20,000, you're two votes. Over 50,000, three votes, and so on. So total weighted votes for the entire board increased from 68 votes to a total representation of 74 votes. Charlotte remained at 31 votes, and actually, their total vote decreased by 3%, and they're still maintaining the, their cost share. So there is the full breakdown of those municipalities and jurisdictions. In addition, some amendments to the MOU include that the current MOU states that amendments require a supermajority vote, which comprises a 75% of the current 68 votes. So any motion to amend the MOU, which they've gone through, would require 51. Now, moving forward, once this is adopted, that supermajority, three-quarter supermajority would change to 56 of the 74 votes. So as far as the four requested action items that the CRTPO Board has endorsed, there was four of those. The first one being endorse revisions to the annual member jurisdiction cost share methodology, which required a three-quarter supermajority vote, and it was unanimous across the board. The second item was to endorse text revisions to the draft MOU documented, document as recommended by Shah Khan Law. That also required a three-quarter supermajority and was unanimously approved by the board. The area of contention involved the endorsing the revisions to weighted voting provision within the drafted, within the draft MOU. Three-quarter supermajority was required and was achieved with three jurisdictions voting against. And then finally, the fourth requested action item was to endorse the MOU revisions approved by the CRTPO Board and release it to the member agencies. That would be us, and that was unanimously approved. So as far as next steps, this item has already been endorsed as of the July 17th CRTPO Board Meeting. Revised MOU, this revised MOU is being circulated for signatures for all member jurisdictions' elected body, and once we move, once CRTPO moves through this process, eventually, the governor must execute the revised MOU before it can be submitted to FHWA to be considered the current MOU. So projected timeline for these changes are mid to late October to fully get this moving forward. So if that, the requested action for this board would be to approve the CRTPO endorsed Memorandum of Understanding, update and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign and execute the document. So happy to discuss any questions that you have.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the CRTPO Endorsement Memorandum of Understanding 2024, update to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign and execute the document?
Motion to approve CRTPO Endorsement Memorandum of Understanding 2024, update and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign or execute the document.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Matt Hubert to present the adoption of Resolution 2024-018.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, so on July 23rd, 2024, the board directed staff to draft a resolution to finalize CRTPO's procedural amendment for the northeast and southeast quadrants of the Waxahau Parkway. Staff is presenting to the Board of Commissioners Resolution 2024-018 for feedback, discussion, and consideration of adoption. With that, here we have the concepts, the resolution should be forthcoming. There we go. So with that, is there any feedback on the resolution itself?
On the final bullets, you did specify exactly which alignment was being discussed?
Correct, so.
So you mentioned, yeah.
Yeah.
2 plus, yep.
If you would scroll down a little bit more, please, IT. And so we have, in Exhibit A is Concept A2 plus B3.1. Those were the actual feasibility alignments that NTDOT brought forward in the feasibility study, and then Waxahau, Union County, and Mineral Springs agreed was the, was the best combination of all the alternatives. And then Exhibit B shows the full extent of the Parkway Amendment that includes the southern portion of the alignment that would line up more favorably with the, with the feasibility alignment. Again, there is already an alignment on the CTP map that is, that is currently adopted.
Which one's on the CTP right now? Is it the A.2, 3.1?
No. And so if, if IT would move to Exhibit B? Okay, and so if you see there, the easternmost orange alignment is what's currently on the CTP as adopted, and then the purple and its subsequent southern green portions are the amendments proposed.
And it's understood that the purple and the green comprise A.2, B.3.1?
The purple is A.2, B.3.1. The green is, is just referenced as the southern alignment, part of that amendment.
Okay. Alright. Any questions from the board?
I do, actually. This is for Jeff, though. You're off the hook. When this came up a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the concern for many citizens that once this road begins to be built, which, if we're lucky, is 30 years from now, that the concern is that it will be overdeveloped, that the parcels will be developed upon, and then this road that's supposed to help us out would be, the improvements would be negated. And you suggested that we can mitigate those concerns with zoning. So I'm wondering if you would be willing to direct the staff to explore some of the zoning changes that would maybe, you know, help citizens feel better about a coming Parkway? Because this isn't really a bypass, right? So it can be built upon. And so it's only two lanes, we need four lanes, is really the, the future goal, right? And so, you know, when people think of Parkway, they think of a free-moving flow of traffic. But if there's development on either side or both sides, that's going to definitely slow things down. So I'd like to take you up on that suggestion.
A common zoning method for these type of situations are what are called overlay districts. I mean, that, that can certainly help. They, they, as just as they're described, they overlay the base zoning, and you can have some additional requirements. It's fairly common for roadways. They would overlap and have additional congestion management-type regulations, things like that. It's very common, sometimes even specific land uses. So yes, that, that is possible. Yes, that's feasible, and certainly have a very capable staff that can come up with some ideas of something that I think could be reasonable with the porcelain knowledge, too, that, that would only apply to what's within the town of Waxahau.
Right.
Obviously, within our ability to, to enforce. But we're, we're happy to, to look into that, sure.
Right, because I know what I've been hearing is that, you know, even though we have things owned, for example, as economic center, a lot, oftentimes, that comes back as a conditional rezoning with tons of residential. And so that will certainly undo whatever we did with the road. So that is definitely a major concern, and if we can take care of that, I think people may be a little bit... So that is definitely a major concern and if we can take care of that, I think people may be a little bit more comfortable with that.
All right, we'll do that.
Yep. Anything else? Alrighty, no further questions, let's go ahead and get a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four zero one eight.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four zero one eight to finalize the CRTPO comprehensive transportation plan procedural amendment for the northeast and southeast quadrants of the Waxall Parkway.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looks like we are already at leadership reports. Jeff, kick us off.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh Waxall one oh one starts tomorrow, so it'll be uh right here in this room, the first session and then uh we'll travel to some of our different facilities throughout and uh hopefully we'll be at our new town hall eventually too as we go through the weeks. I understand that we have thirty one participants, so we're excited to uh to have everybody here tomorrow.
And just a highlight on that, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt that.
Yep.
Uh just a highlight on Waxall one oh one, uh Barbie and I did sign a notification of a potential quorum for the entirety of Waxall one oh one, so the whole commission is certainly invited to attend any of those meetings, all of those meetings, some of those meetings, or if you wish, none of those meetings.
All right, a few other things, um if you uh drive by our cemetery now, you will see the columbarium has been completed there. So I believe if I remember right, that would be forty eight uh niches there and uh understand that we already have some interest there, so that's a uh a good thing. It it looks great, I think it fits into the space uh very well and so looking forward to the how that uh that progresses, I guess you could say. Uh also, Public Services completed a small metal building on their compost site, which is behind the Hare's teeter, to help shelter the three uh large leafback trucks that we have. So that'll help protect those uh vehicles better from the elements, so they're real proud of getting that completed. And then the uh the other reminder is the Union County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Summit is coming up, this is an annual thing. It is on September eleventh this year, uh starting at uh eight thirty to three P M, several staff will be attending. I know you all have the invite, if it's uh um if you're able to do that on your schedule, it's Mr. Doug Griffith. Uh he spoke last year, uh his keynote speech is usually the thirteen ways to kill your community is what he goes around the country talking about. Uh his focus this time, from what I understand, will be on collaboration, cooperation and the future of our community. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, next up we have Matt, Matt Hubert, come on down.
Good to see you. Okay, um just a a paving update on our local paving project, um we've, we're in Quellen right now and we're gonna pave uh Blackburn Drive tomorrow. Everything, everything right, everything there looks in like it's gonna be in great shape. Update on the N C D O T project prioritizations that have been been a a recent concern. We understand preliminary feedback is that the grade separated crossing project, which is the from the rail division of P fifty seven forty eight will continue to move forward as as scheduled, so that will not be uh pushed back due to budget. Uh also, the signal and turn lane improvements at um at Bonds Grove Church and and Providence Road, uh that's U fifty seven sixty nine A A is is still on track as well and then we should see that within the year ideally. Uh and then fifty seven sixty nine A and B, which are the the two segments of the widening of Providence Road uh from Ray down to to the Parkway, they're still under consideration, so it's still still on the on the books. It's the last one being considered and and we hope to hear back, hopefully good news, um shortly. And then file update, N C seventy five paving has been moved from from this summer to late May of twenty twenty five. Combination of weather and and issues with the contractor and contract time has has forced the uh the movement of that to to next year. Because it's night work as well, that that reduced the the amount of time they would have to do it before we get into the colder months where temperature is is contractually an issue.
And just a highlight, we are talking that's gonna be night work, are do are they able to work just as long yeah near a night shift as they are during a day shift, or does that cut down the shift a little as well?
Um generally no, because you, they really can't get started until uh peak hours out of the way, then they ramp up mobilization and then they begin in the plant, all of those things kind of usually typically you don't see as much productivity. But that's that's kind of a case by case, this is a one single long straight shot, so it doesn't have a lot of complications besides the fact that it's just narrow, no shoulders, um so that's kind of a conversational piece. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Police Chief Dex Wilson.
Good evening again, I'll uh try to speak fast, we've had a very, very busy uh month and a half. Uh so I wanted to go over some stats with you, things we've been doing and as well as community events, all that kind of stuff. So for the months of July and August, there were two hundred and forty eight citations issued with a total of four hundred and thirty three charges. Warning citations, there was three hundred and twenty eight warning citations issued. Uh so if you can see from state citations to warning citations, we write way more warnings than we do regular state citations. Uh but we really, we really pride ourselves in uh if somebody doesn't have prior tickets, if somebody has uh, you know, a clean history, you you really don't want to throw a four or five hundred dollar fine on them people. Uh but if they do have a history which shows in the system, so if you get a warning, everybody, uh make sure you don't do it again, because you're probably gonna get a real ticket next time. Uh calls for service, we responded to two thousand and eleven calls for service, traffic crashes, we had fifty four traffic crashes. Twelve of those were rear end crashes. I want to warn everybody that we are ramping up on uh distracted driving. So if you're texting and driving, reading articles, reading a book, reading a newspaper, you're probably gonna get a ticket and that's a two hundred and ninety one dollar fine. So uh let's all do the right thing and pull over if we need to uh read a text, write a text or anything else. Prevented patrols and business checks, so we did four thousand one hundred and two prevented patrols, uh three hundred and fourteen business checks. And the business checks don't include like the downtown businesses because they don't check out at each business. You know, once we start walking downtown, we go from business to business to to visit each uh business owner. So that's probably more like uh five to six hundred business checks, you know, that that we've completed through the P D. Uh we made sixty nine arrests with a total of a hundred and forty one charges. Community events, we assisted the uh women's self-defense class at the Powerhouse Karate, conducted a safety plan with Amazing Grace Lutheran Church located on Main Street, or excuse me, uh West North Main Street, assisted uh with Colonial Day at the Museum of the Waxalls, assisted with Back to School Bash at the Waxall Elementary. Uh also wanted to remind everybody the Citizen Police Academy is coming up really quick, September ninth is our first night. Uh it is a Monday night, we are still looking for applications, we're not fortunate enough to have thirty one people that are interested in the police department, so uh if you're interested, please, please uh apply for uh Citizen Police Academy. Uh narcotics detectives, they've had a busy month as well. They've charged one count of possession when attempting to deliver marijuana, one count felony possession of marijuana, count of possession of uh methamphetamines, two counts of drug paraphernalia, they've seized thirty five pounds of marijuana, three kil- uh three kilograms of methamphetamine, two kilos of cocaine and three hundred and twenty six thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars in U S currency. Criminal detectives, they cleared twenty.
No fentanyl?
No fentanyl this month, no.
Thank you.
So we're happy about that, but we're we're not happy at the same time because we gotta get that stuff off the street. Uh criminal detectives have done an absolutely amazing job uh clearing the vehicle break-ins. We had twenty vehicle break-ins over one night, uh they were able to clear every one of those break-ins. Uh they currently have twenty three open cases that they're working right now. They received seventy one arrest warrants for crimes ranging from felony larceny all the way to injury or bru- injury to a property. So uh very, very busy, uh but very productive. Any questions?
Sounds like it, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it up. Next up, Ms. Lisa Thompson.
Thank you, um I just have a few development project updates. Uh the Yarborough Farm is a byright uh preliminary plat uh coming forward, it went to planning board last week. It's a five hundred and two home, single family and town home development, um this will be on your agenda September tenth. Um also coming up for public hearing is the initial zoning and annexation public hearing for the property um that was on the agenda tonight, um Office Seventy Five. We have the Artisan at Prescott, it's a town home development. The preliminary plat is expected to go to planning board in September, so you guys will see that in October timeframe. Um along with the public hearing for atrium uh mixed use development, that's an age restricted, multi-family and office building uh mixed use. Um all those projects are on our planning uh page on the website under developer projects, so you can look at those site plans and I would be happy to answer any questions um from the public, from you all, on any of those projects. Um as the mayor mentioned before, the um views at Olivia did have their neighborhood meeting, this was on August twentieth. Um they are required to have a neighborhood meeting prior to application, so we have not received an application at this time. Once we do, we'll we'll get that up on the website um and have a a two by two meeting with with you all to go over that application. For the commercial side, Los Foods Grocery Store is getting ready to break ground very soon. Uh Rehoboth Flex Space, that's about fifty thousand square feet of office flex space, um that's behind the Adellas, old seven oh one main building on Rehoboth Road, um they broke deck, broke broke ground um about two weeks ago. And the old Burger King is been approved, building permits have been approved for Salsa's restaurant, so we look forward to that. Um also reminder, I think Barbie sent out the email for C L G training, that's for elected officials and staff, um that's in Monroe on September thirteenth. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all leadership reports for the day, any comments from the board?
I just wanted to thank Lisa and the planning staff for all their, excuse me, hard work on that conservation subdivision. It was a lot of work and uh I did get the opportunity to visit a a conservation subdivision and it was quite beautiful. The way that it was planned, every home backed woods, uh a lot of open space and it was a great way not to dis- to displace our furry friends. We don't want another fox running around Oxford Mill Road by my house, so let's keep the trees where they are. Thank you, Lisa and staff.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are so adjourned, have a good night.